Good evening and welcome to the November 7th meeting of the Brea Board of Education. Roll call please.
Mrs. Chapman?
Here.
Mrs. Ferris?
Here.
Mr. Mack?
Here.
Mr. Postal?
Here.
Mrs. Zirke?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, public participation. Our first speaker is Bruna Gallati.
Thank you very much for having me for three minutes. This evening I'd like to give you... Okay. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak for three minutes this evening. My name is Bruna Gallati and I work... live here in Middleburg Heights. Been lived here for four years. I have been reviewing the list of books available to the high school students at the school library here in Brea, and so far have found 43 that should not be read by anyone under 18 years of age. I've brought a few with me. This one is entitled "Asking for It." You can think of whatever you want about its content. This one's called "Ugly Love." And this one is "Beyond Magenta." These books, in my opinion, should be banned from the high school library. And I haven't completed the search for the high school level yet. So this is just a partial list, which I'm happy to provide to you. The 43 books that I've found are rated either a four or a five, five being for adults only, and four rated as no minors under 18, since they contain adult-only content, meaning there are explicit references to aberrant sexual activities, sexual assault and battery, bestiality, or sodomistic abuse; obscene references to sexual activities involving anal, oral, or vaginal intercourse or ejaculation. Any parent would question how books in this category would improve the scholastic scores for any student, and yet these can be found in the Brea School Library. As a taxpayer, I'm appalled that my money would be spent on any of these books, let alone for a school library. I won't take up too much more of your time, but I would appreciate hearing back as to how we can approach this and many other books that I've found just at the high school level, and I haven't yet gone through the middle school or elementary school level. But I would be happy to have worked with... to work with someone or several people, and there could be myself or perhaps a few other people who have children in the school district that would be interested in working to see if we could eliminate some of these, hopefully many of them. Thank you very much.
Bruna, we do have a process for that. If you contact the superintendent tomorrow, she can give you the appropriate form. Next is James Grash.
Thanks, Mike Draves, sir. Let's see. Thanks, Mike Draves, for getting us that list of books that are in the Brea City School District. I'm just going to play you this video of one that's in our junior high and our senior high.
We have books after book after book after book. This is the junior high. This book contains sexually explicit assault and battery. I hesitate to read it. I don't feel comfortable reading it to adults. 13-year-olds can check this book out. And you guys have bought it for them and provided it for them. And it needs to be corrected ASAP. Are you going to eat her pussy? Yeah, Earl, I'm going to eat her pussy. Do you even know how to eat pussy? Uh, no, not really. Papa Gaines never sat you down and said, "Son, one day you're going to have to eat the pussy." No, but he taught me how to eat a butthole. Yep, I would teach you some pussy-eating technique. But it's a little complicated. Son, I don't have time for that. I got 20 pussies over here I need to eat. Is that right? I'm on a pussy deadline. It goes on and on and on and on and on and on. There are 79 fucks in this book. 79. 51 shits, 11 dicks, 15 pussies, and nine goddamns, and the list goes on. And you guys need to fix it.
So yeah, what I want to know is who's approving these books coming into our school system? This is available to a seventh grader in Brea Middle School. It's verified on the list you sent me, Mike. Thank you, Gunna. Following up with Bruna's, that's just the tip of the iceberg. And people need to know who's responsible for bringing these books into our school system. What educational value is these books in here, groomers? That's what you're doing. That's what this book is. It's grooming, it's pedophilia, it's sexualizing kids. And it needs to stop. And if you people don't stop it, there's parents in this district that want to protest right in front of your houses and your businesses. And I'll go support them. If they decide to do that, I'll be right with them. Teaching kids about eating pussy. Books for seventh graders can get this book. And maybe kids read this book before the hazing incident. Maybe that's where they got the idea from. Who knows? But it's available to our kids in seventh grade. You okay with that? Huh, Chapman? You okay with that? Ferris? Huh? You reading up on a stamp for kids? Huh?
Let's see.
Stamp for kids. About white hate and white privilege.
Your time is up, Mr. Grash.
Uh-huh. Who's responsible for these books?
Mr. Grash, your time is up. Thank you.
Disgusting.
And just to be clear, are you threatening us? Okay.
What, by protesting?
In front of our homes, yes. Okay, next is Ed Dean.
I have a question, first of all. Who... how does a person representing the public get on a curriculum review, which is assigned or authorized by the state to all school districts? Who determines what people are on that review committee? Anybody can answer that?
Can you continue with your three minutes?
So you... okay, well, how do I get a list of those public people who are participating on that committee? Can I get that list?
The superintendent will reach out to you tomorrow.
And who determines who is on that list? Okay, would you... would you get back to me? Because I wrote a certified letter on September 22nd, and due to your non-transparency, you refused to give me an answer on valid questions. I gave this board copies of state statutes which you ignored. So you're in violation of not only state statutes, but you're in violation of federal and state constitutions. Now, you refused to give me an answer when I asked you the question, "When do I get an answer on that?" So I'm just going to add to the confusion and the transparency, which you are not being transparent to the public. And yet this school board, and any school board, swore to uphold the laws of the state, statutes, and federal and state constitutions. The superintendent did not, but she assigned masking directives when she was not authorized to do so. In your minutes, there is no notification of a certified notification from the state as far as who is the authorized medical person. I find that in contempt. And you better... I suggest you review the laws which I hand-gave you many months ago and really read it for a change. Thank you.
Mr. Dean, your request was answered. You're just not happy with that response. Please don't mislead the public. You asked for something, and we replied. And that's all we're required to do. Thank you. Your email, we have record of that, and you should as well. Okay, next we have executive session. It's recommended the Board of Education move into executive session for the purpose of considering matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or regulation or state statutes. Second. Roll call please.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Okay, the meeting stands in recess while we go into executive session.
Way back. Okay, warned our regular business, item number one. It's recommended that the board uphold the superintendent's expulsion later dated October 4th, 2022, that student Andrew Wright did or did not violate the student code of conduct as recommended by the superintendent's recommendation.
So move. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Urkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller will be in touch with you tomorrow as to what's going to happen next and further steps to get him to his place at school. Thank you for coming. Okay, legislative update. We, um, the State Board of Education had that resolution presented by Board Member Brendan Shea in September, and then in October, they had a lot of testimony on both sides of the issue, and they couldn't come to a decision, so they sent it to executive committee, and they met last week on Halloween, and they also could not come to a decision, so they decided to approach it again on November 14th. So there's still no resolution to their resolution. Hey, are there any committee reports? Okay, Board of Education comments. Before we do shout outs, I just want to say we had our first listening leaders on October 26th, and two board members were present, as well as, I believe, eight members of the administrative team, and we were there for a full hour, and we had one person come with their child to share a personal concern, and that was it. We were hoping that more people would come out and chat with us, so hopefully you will at the next one in December. Okay.
I have two shout outs. First, congratulations to Senior Brooke Bechtel of the Burya Mid Park Cross Country Team. She's the first state qualifier since the fall of 2016 as an individual, as a female runner. She qualified for the OHSA State Meet held this past Saturday at Fortress, O'Betts, and Memorial Park. She ran well, it's a field of the best cross country runners in Ohio, so congratulations to Brooke, her family, her coaches, her teammates, all who helped make this season one to remember. Second shout out is to the Burya Mid Park High School Art Department, which was fortunate to be invited to be part of the Big Ink Workshop held at BW this past week. The art teachers each selected a student to participate in this one of a kind workshop. Seniors Emma Stout, who is the designer, Katera Flakes, Lindsay Serino, and Cecilia Cook all took part in the creation of a 40 by 60 inch woodblock print. BW will be having an art exhibition titled A Big Relief beginning November, Friday, November 11th at the Fowick Art Gallery, opening at 5:00 PM, where all the different prints from all the schools, colleges, and like Cleveland Institute of Art, all, you know, everybody will be displayed there. The prints will be for sale, including the Burya Mid Park print. For more information about the show, they can be found at the Fox 8 Community Calendar or on the BW website. Here's them in the process from creation. Original, the design is on the left. Pretty cool.
Um, so my shout out is going to Burya Mid Park Middle School and their brand new Positive Peeps group, which was just brought into existence, and it's a group of middle school students that get together and try to make positive, upbeat, encouraging things happen throughout the school, the community, and let's see, so some of the simple things that they're talking about doing are writing encouraging post-it notes, signs and posters, and having them placed throughout the school, and also trying to find ways to make a positive impact in the community, like picking up litter, or visiting nursing homes, or dropping off handmade cards. So it's a kindness outreach at the middle school. So it's a kindness outreach at the middle school. There, they want to spread kindness, encourage others, bring a little more, little more joy to oneself and to each other, bring a part of the, bring a part of the group that can change somebody's day for the better, being positive and spending together time to make a difference. So if you find that you, if you have a middle school child and they'd like to get involved, please reach out to the middle school. There's a parent volunteer helping coordinate the program, and it sounds to me like it's a great way to put our middle schoolers to work to do some positive things.
I want to give a shout out to Kristin Johnson, the school counselor at Grindstone, who's hosting a book talk. Mrs. Johnson got a grant from the Education Foundation, and she has 20 copies of How to Raise Kind Kids and Get Respect, Gratitude, and a Happier Family in the Bargain. And I did some of these book talks with Mrs. Johnson when I was at Grindstone. I love that she's continuing to do this work. It's another really good example of family engagement happening inside of our district, and in my experience, Mrs. Johnson picks books. I think I'm a better parent for having participated in these programs, so I hope that all 20 of those spots are filled.
I want to recognize Grindstone Elementary School. They've created a rain garden, and it's helped students learn about the Lake Erie watershed and why we need the types of gardens to prevent runoff. But they did it with high school students who came to help and to work with this elementary student, so I thought that was a nice program. The high school kids were in the Co-Lake Outdoor Science and Education class, some of the AP Environmental Science course students, and the nature club all were involved. But we had outside entities as well. Kioga Soil and Water Conservation District and the National Oceanic Atmospheric Administration provided grants that were used to apply, purchase tools and plants, as well as building and grounds helped do the initial layout for these gardens, then the elementary high school students planted the things that needed to be done. So I think it was a great example of, of learning, as well as involving multiple groups, district, outside district. I just thought it was a very nice project, and I believe the high school students are going to come back twice a month to help maintain the garden with, twice a month. I just thought it was a very cool, cool project.
And I'd like to shout out to Teacher Liz Atkins at the middle school for taking eight girls to BW last month for the STEM Goes Red for Girls Day. The event was put on by the American Heart Association and Go Red for Women to help inspire women to learn more about the STEM fields. The girls participated in three sessions, each having different female speakers. The first session was led by two engineers, and then the girls had the challenge to create the tallest tower that would hold a chandelier. Our girls won that challenge. From there, they went to a presentation led by a cardiac surgeon from university hospitals, and they also got to see a pig heart dissection and even got to hold a pig heart. After that, a box lunch was provided where they had the opportunity to talk with panelists assigned to their table about STEM. The girls ended their day at the expo, which had different businesses, all STEM related. They got to do hands-on activities, such as learning about torque and measuring their strength, they practiced CPR, used a picture of their dog to search for others that looked like theirs in a database to understand AI virtual reality with NASA, and they even got to see how a product is developed first through sketch, prototype, and final product. They left with a bunch of swag, names for networking, and even future scholarship opportunities, as well as a lot of information about the various paths they could choose in STEM. And I'd also like to shout out the high school for featuring their fifth annual Immigration: This is My Story presentation a few weeks ago, where they had students and staff who shared their personal and family immigration experiences, and had question and answers about what they've experienced coming to the United States. Okay, next we have a presentation from our Treasurer Jill on our five-year forecast.
So the five-year forecast, this is the November filing of the five-year forecast. I'm going to take you briefly through it. If you have any questions, we're not going to approve it till the next board meeting, so there's time in between, if you have any questions after the presentation tonight. Again, always start off on why, the why behind it, to provide a standardized tool for our long-range planning at the local level, to serve as a basis for approving contracts, which are called 412 certificates, and basically so the Department of Education and the Auditor of State can, can monitor us to make sure we're not headed towards any financial difficulties. Starting off with total revenue, again, taxes are our lion's share of our revenue, local taxes, real estate taxes. Eighty-one percent of, of our revenue comes from, from taxes, the other comes from the state of Ohio, or just basically other revenue like investments or tuition, if we're receiving some tuition. I will say, in this economy with inflation and the interest rates being raised, we are receiving a significant amount more of interest. So it's helping us on our revenue side, but with the inflation, it's also hurting us on our expenditure side. So just an example, last month alone, we made about $50,000 of interest on just our money sitting in Star Ohio. So we haven't seen interest this great in a very, very long time. Again, helping us on our revenue, as long as we're investing appropriately and, and keeping, keeping up to date with that, but also hurting us on our expenditure side because of the nature of inflation. As you can see, actual revenue was about 86 million in fiscal year '22, which was last year, that's actual. It's projected to, to come down to 79, almost 80 million, and then moving forward, it ratchets it up slightly. We don't have a ton of room to grow in our revenue, and we'll go through why. Basically, our real estate taxes, I, I mentioned in, in May, our real estate taxes, next slide, sir. Our, our real estate taxes came in last fiscal year at 57, almost $58 million. That was an anomaly of a, a year. There's a couple caveats on why it came in so high. We received about $1 million in additional delinquency payments. Basically, a large commercial taxpayer was delinquent, you know, the year before that property sold, so once the sale happens, the real, the taxes get collected. So our, our delinquencies were up about $1 million. Also too, we, this is fiscal year basis, July to June. Taxes are collected on a calendar year basis, so comparing calendar years, we're really not that far off from year to year to year, but when you do it fiscal year wise, it created a huge anomaly in '22 because more taxpayers paid earlier. Our collection split, or the amount that we, that we received in the spring was a lot higher than it normally was, so taxpayers paid early in the spring.
Was that part of the, like, when they rewrote the tax, the tax code, and so that you weren't, weren't going to be able to at a certain point?
Yeah.
Deduct your property taxes, so there was a big rush?
Yes.
To pay?
I believe-
Everybody paid for the full year instead of half and half.
When I first started in fiscal, in 19, that happened, there was a huge anomaly in 19, and it, it again, happened this year. Again, if you compare calendar year wise, we're not that far off, but when you look at the fiscal year, a lot more was, was figured in in the spring, definitely. Collection split has been adjusted in this forecast to make up for that, to have, you know, a little less coming in in the fall, just so we're not being overzealous on, on these numbers. So as you can see, we've taken, I've taken the taxes down by collection split to 50, 53 million, 53.7 million. I mentioned that we were in triennial update also last year, where our values got increased, and we had an increase of about 16% on our values, our total valuation. However, I, I always mention this, doesn't mean we're going to get more money. House Bill 920, inflationary bill that was passed in the late 70s because of inflation back then, we only get what we got the first year it was passed, and then the Department of Tax ratchets it down. As our valuation goes up, we don't see more money on those, those levies. They ratcheted it down, so we get what we got the first year it was passed. We're, we'll talk a little bit at the end of this presentation about a levy cycle potentially, and what that looks like, but there's also things that, that we're going to start talking about of maybe looking at replacement levies, to, to bring those old levies up to today's standards. Is that an option? Or, you know, potentially looking at, at new money, but we'll, we'll talk later in the forecast about what, what a potential levy might look like. Our state monies, our state monies, our money from the state of Ohio, basically, in this forecast, the new funding model is, is built in. I'm assuming it's going to continue, I'm assuming that the legislature is going to pass it. And why am I assuming that? Because at this point in time, we are on two guarantees. I know I talked about, you know, this new formula is wonderful, but they did build two guarantees into this formula as it phases in. Right now, we're being paid at 33% of the formula, and it's supposed to ratchet in the next, next years to come, if the, the biennial budget gets passed with this formula still in it. It could, it could not. We are seeing completely different representatives down at the state than when this was passed. Senator Cupp is term limited, Senator Patton was, Patterson was term limited last time, so we're, we're really working hard as an organization to say, this is a pretty fair formula, please look at it. But the two guarantees that were built into law is the Temporary Transition Aid Guarantee, which ensures that we will receive what we got in fiscal year '20, if all, after the formulas completely ran. So we did hit that guarantee this year, the Temporary Transition Aid Guarantee, so we are on, on that guarantee. The Formula Transition Supplement, it ensures that districts do not receive less in fiscal year '23 than what they received in '21, based on all the calculations in the formula, and it's a pretty big, long calculation to, to get to this Formula Transition Supplement. What base are they using versus what base are we getting paid at this year? We are on this guarantee also. So why, why, why did we hit these two guarantees? Again, the formula increased, it's at 33% now, we have enrollment losses still occurring. Our valuation and our adjusted, our adjusted gross income are figured into this formula. Our valuation is, it's an average of the, the, average of the three past years or the lesser of this year, so there's three years figured in, federal adjusted gross incomes figured in. Our valuation increase hit the formula this year. So we are now, again, more rich than, to the formula. So I believe our state share that we're getting, our base cost came out at about a little over $7,000 per pupil, but because of the state share, or because we're so wealthy locally, we get about $1,000 per pupil, because it, basically, the formula is saying, you can make it up locally, you can make it up with your taxes. Next slide. This slide's a little hard to read, but it very, it calculates what students we would, what we would need to get back, to get back on the formula. This line here would get us off the transition guarantee if it continued, 64. This line right here would get us off of the supplemental transition. So 64 plus 188, we'd need over 200 kids to get back on the formula this year. And then it goes, as the formula increases, and we get wealthier in the, in the, the assumption that we're getting wealthier as our valuation's going up, that number just gets really big, really big, really quick. So that's just an illustration to show where kind of we're at to get back on the formula. If we're back on the formula, we grow. We, we, we see increases as they run the formula. Right now, we're getting what we got in fiscal year '20. Basically, that's where we're at, because of those enrollment losses. Now, I have an enrollment slide in here. I want you guys to note, this is not head count. Our head count is around 5,200 students right now. We are funded based off of FTE, Full Time Equivalent, which is a student's day versus the semester versus the year. How long are they in our buildings? How long are they here? So that's, that's what we're being funded off of now, and we've dropped below? 5,000. We're, we're now below 5,000 on funded FTE. It could be a kid coming part-time, it could be a kid, or absences could be figured in, so it's all based on, how long are they in the building? How long are they in this class? How long, I always say, like, with our career tech classes, we're not going to get a ton of money off of those because it's based off of a period a day or two periods a day for either a nine-week, a semester, or a year. So, you know, how is that class figured in? And that's how we get funded. So that is a number we're going to have to, to watch, the funded FTE, but that's why, again, we've, we've fallen on the guarantee.
So you're saying that a student who goes to Polaris for part of the day? Or goes to Tri-C? And spends part of the day there? They don't count?
No, because-
It, because they're, because they're not full-time students?
Right.
In our buildings, in our seats.
Right. And that funding follows that kid to Polaris now, that funding I pay for the CCP, you know, CCP classes and stuff, but yeah, it's, that's how the funding has, has been for, for a while now, so it's just, you know, basically, I, I was looking at this going, I know we have 5,200 kids in this district, based on our enrollment, but that's head count, that's actual head count. This is funded FTE per student.
Wow.
So yeah, as the numbers keep going down, and, and we've had an enrollment decline, we had a little anomaly in '22, I think that was after the effects of COVID, you know, getting, getting kids back, you know, there was about 50,000 ghost kids in the state of Ohio where they, nobody knew where they were. A lot, that's when the enrollment declined, about 50,000 when COVID hit, so, but we know the enrollment's declining, it's declining across the state, so it's not really a huge anomaly for us, it's just something we have to keep monitoring. Our total expenses, I always show the pie chart, payroll and benefits make up our, our lion's share of expenses. Again, we're continually monitoring our purchase service and our supplies and materials lines. I, I heard a word from our head bus mechanic the other day about potential diesel shortages coming up. We, we have enough in reserves for about two months, I think. About a third of our buses are gas right now, I think, and the rest are diesel, so we're gonna try to reserve those buses in, you know, longer trips, the gas buses are going to go. We're really going to, going to monitor this diesel situation, it's going to get up to over six bucks a gallon. We do get discounts on it because we purchase bulk, but if it gets higher at six bucks a gallon, plus shortages, supply shortages nationwide, we're gonna, we're, it's going to be a tough spot for a lot of districts. Well, again, we are fortunate where we do have about a third of our buses are, are gas at this point. You can see, actual expenditures for last year were 82.4 million, they're forecasted down this year to 79.8, and then again, they ratchet back up as the forecast goes on. Why is that? Why did expenses go down this year? You can, the next slide. Again, payroll and benefits are our biggest line items. Basically, in this forecast, we negotiated a contract, but in this forecast, we also had a lot of retirees. We had a lot of retirees last year where we, when we hired, we hired younger, less experienced BA zeros, BA ones, bachelor's ones, you know, in this forecast. Also too, I, I know of seven retirees at this point in time. This is the earliest I've ever really known of retirees, with our, our small retirement incentive, we've offered the, the staff, so seven retirees are figured in, 24 and beyond. I have a little higher, new hires coming back in, just to be conservative, like at, at the master state, but again, with, with personnel in, in Tracy's, Tracy's marching orders, is, let's try to hire the, the younger ones to keep the payroll down. But again, they, they always come to me and, and plead if, if we need to do something different. Go, skip that slide, we, I've already got on stipulous money. During negotiations, again, in this forecast, we have the 3%, 2%, 1% figured into this forecast for the known years, for the years out past the negotiated, just steps are included, so there's no raises figured in. Also during negotiations, we did a health insurance plan design change. We didn't move the money from, I'm paying this and you're paying that, really the big savings in health insurance is to change your plan, and we did. We, we, we worked with both unions to, to change the plan, which included increased deductibles, it increased out-of-pocket. That alone saved us about $500,000 in benefits, which was, which made it better to give the raises that we did give because of the savings. Again, the, the unions worked well with us, we had a lot of data from our brokers showing who's using the plan, who's not using the plan, you know, only a third of the staff actually meet their out-of-pocket max. So it, it was, it was good information, we made good decisions, and we did save about $500,000 moving that deductibles and out-of-pocket to a- and we did save about $500,000, moving that deductibles and out-of-pocket to a higher number. The forecast assumes a 10% increase in health insurance, but again, this is a variable number that we're going to have to watch because of the, again, inflation and the increase in cost on health insurance. With the consortium that we're in, it's, it makes us a lot more stable. Our money is, we're our own entity in our consortium, but our money's pulled together. We have a bad year, another district could be paying for us. Another district has a bad year, vice versa. That's the whole concept of a consortium, plus to save on administrative fees. We really get a better break the more lives we have on the admin fees. So, it was a very good move for us to move into the consortium because we had two very volatile years prior to moving into there. And we're still paying that back right now, that deficit. So, the forecast line six, I always tell you guys, it's the most important line. Just '23, we're barely showing that we're not deficit spending $105,000. But moving forward, as expenses outweigh revenues, deficit spending is occurring. Go to the next slide, Vic. If we go to the next slide, I think if you guys remember, in the May forecast, 2026 was negative at that time. But with the hirings that we did this year, that flushed through the forecast. It has a huge compounding effect. So, we were able to show '26 being positive, just barely. But then '27, the fifth year that I added on now, that we're, we've moved fiscal years, is negative. So, it goes quick once we start going negative, but based on hiring and watching our enrollment and stuff, I think this will look a little different in May also because we'll be able to have some of those hirings done earlier in the school year. Now, we haven't talked much about a levy. I know that there's been a lot of, well, they're going to go this year, they're going to go that year. We'll determine when we're going to go and what makes most sense to go on a levy. We've, since I've been here, we've been pushing it out further and further. We haven't had a levy, an operating levy, since '12, 2012. So, it's been 10 years since we've actually had an operating levy. The bond issue was passed in '17, but it's an operating levy. So, we've made our money work for a while, for 10 years now. If you look at this slide, it's a little hard to see, but on, these are the estimators. Basically, if we were to go in '23, it gives you a low range and a high range if we were to go sometime in '23. If we were to go in '24, it gives you a low range and high range. And if you were to go in '25, same thing. Down here, as of today, it tells you what one mil will generate. So, if we did, you know, five mils, it'd be five mil, you know, based on that. This is just a cash balance slide, but this is all built into our software that we use, that you, we can, I can do any type of situation in there, run it through the forecast, show that, that's, you know, simulation for basically anything we're thinking about. And then, moving forward, I would like to get some more information from our bond counselor squires, who helps us with doing the levy language, to see what some maybe replacement levies might look like. Because a replacement levy, again, would bring it, but this is, would be new money. The replacement levy would bring an old levy up to today's standards. We get that money off of today, and then it'd start going down again with House Bill 920. We do have a lot of old levies on the books, especially our permanent improvement levies, but they, basically, a lot of them are in the 80s. So, we're getting $400,000 in 1980, we're getting $400,000 today. So, what would that look like with our valuation increases over time? More to come on this. This was just an early, you know, here's kind of what it would look like based on today. But again, I think with the retirees coming in and then, you know, our hiring practices moving forward, May's going to look a little different than this. So, and at that time, we can continue to talk about, you know, what a levy would look like in the future and when will be a good time, if, if any, if not. Be my goal. So, at the end, any discussion based on the forecast? There's a lot of variables. Again, I always say that moving parts in this forecast, and it's really only because the day I do it, because something, I get, something else comes in. But I tried to capture as much as I could with retirees of the known I had as of last week. So, that's all basically figured in.
Thank you, Jill. Any questions? Okay. So, next on the agenda, the agenda is adjournment. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Roll call, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone, for staying around. Have a good night.